Okay, I'm meeting to order and if I could ask Village Clerk Schmitke to-
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Here.
Trustee Michelle.
Here.
Trustee O'Connor.
Here.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Here.
Trustee.
Here.
All right, we're all present in the county. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of America, with its own nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty, justice, and- All right, welcome everyone to this Drury Tuesday, October 11th Fall Meeting. The first item on the agenda, our homeowners associations, is Rick Scardino here by any chance online? I know you're not in the room. Also, what about Don Bordeaux from Ravina? Do you have something different? Wait a minute, all right, so I don't see anyone from any of the HOAs. We now have a public comment, I will ask Village Clerk Schmitke if we received any online comments?
I did not.
We did not, okay. Are there any comments from anybody in the room? Any comments from anyone online?
Jenny's making a face because our management notes house the homeowners from last time.
Yeah.
Right.
I called it, I figured it out, but um-
Oh, so we have-
I'm looking at it.
A second, so I have, wait a minute, so the agenda and the manager's report are different, is that what you're calling out?
Yeah.
All right, let me go over this, is that correct?
I assume the agenda is-
The ones you called out were correct.
I assume the agenda is correct.
Okay, got it, so I have, the ones I called out are correct.
Yes.
Thank you. That's where the face is coming from. All right, so-
Do we take your manager's report?
Close your eyes, you had that look. All right, then, the next item on the agenda is the public safety reports. We do have, is it Detective Fish?
Yes.
Ken Fish here.
Yep.
Do you want to present to us?
No, can you stand here or-
Stand, you can, wherever you're comfortable, so.
Um, I apologize, Sergeant Conner was able to make it use the ill city, so I chatted with him this morning. He reached out, you know, they have been handling some of the Long Grove area burglaries, presidential burglaries that we've had over the last year, so. I myself handled the majority of them, not all of them, and with that, we found a certain pattern that fits the MO that a- basically Chilean national group that targets very affluent areas, so back in April, I passed them with this information along. Sergeant Amber was out here as the lead on that time. I don't know how much of that was discussed or, we also met with some of the homeowners associations, Debbie Floyd in person, and I've met with them over the phone. Formerly Royal Melbourne, hit a number of times by these repeatedly, so I chatted with them, both their property management, their homeowners association, as well as their security. Kind of enlightened them to what our findings were, so unfortunately, they're not the only ones that target these areas. This is true for most of the southern half of Lake County, so various areas, the mountain, heartland, forests, basically all across the southern half of the county.
Coming in-
Sorry.
Other than close counties, very commonly vaults. So they, what we see from this particular group is they come in the area for about two weeks' span, they stay in hotels in that house where they're going into. And they commit some presidential burglaries, sometimes leave their houses that are sitting empty, sometimes leave their houses where somebody goes to dinner. And they'll just wait for them to step out, they'll come in, they're very disciplined, they'll typically make second story entries in master bedroom. Typically because second story aren't alarmed, they break down windows, prison alarm windows typically, most alarm systems only cover the main floor. Some do have flash break sensors elsewhere, motion detectors elsewhere, but basically by the time they've tripped any alarms, they're either on their way out or not at all. That alarm house is that they're coming to set the alarm off. They'll go in, clean out the master bedroom, closets, value poles, primarily are looking for jewelry, expensive handbags and stuff gets sent out usually like within the day. They ship it, they ship domestically and then somebody presumably packages it from outside of country. It's a huge issue, it's a nationwide issue, what I've shared, they think they got a copy of this morning, we didn't already have that with, just a link to some of them in New York. All over Southern California, we see this, Ohio, Indiana, they've made it up into Wisconsin now. We are definitely on their swing generally, they'll just drive right across the country. We're getting better data and we're kind of on this work and this. Have kind of few and far between where they may be from DNA behind, either they didn't cut during their entry or exit, or they've left tools behind, who've been able to make some progress with the app to identify those. This particular group is a lot larger than, you know, local entities that are on Homeland Security's radar. They have immense database of these people, I thought it was maybe dozens or hundreds of people, there's actually thousands that do this. And, I mean, they are a criminal functioning criminal organization and internationally at that. Most of them come obviously, especially national that come here either through a voluntary or just over safety since that they're parole on, and then for years. Apparently typically male, but they're very sophisticated, they have rental car agencies established here, they have travel agencies, I can only assume they have shipping agencies that help them if we just got here. So it's a huge issue, I can't even guess what these, only billions and billions of dollars a year that they were clearing out. And just as last week, there's some that are in custody down in Tennessee, in Nashville area, that are some phone work on their stuff. They're also involved in indoor stores, burglaries, so, and some of it's been handled better, and right here in Long Grove identified through some of their cases, so. We have a couple of arrests pending, working through the warrant process, which is lengthy, the DNA results, it's literally monkey, so. And there's a couple of individuals that I have identified who are cases, I mean, they're involved in five, six other open cases where their DNA hits. So probably hundreds of other burglaries, but ones that they've left, and there's individuals that are in custody in Nashville right now that was involved here. It's got an open case in Alabama, Wisconsin, Massachusetts, and California, so they're that strange. They're in and out of here in a couple of weeks, so while the Nashville, this group was picked up in Nashville in the last few weeks. We've seen them in our area again, mostly down in Northern Cook County, as recent yesterday. One burglary is a week ago here in Long Grove, and I've got videos actually this afternoon from one of the homeowners, it doesn't appear to be linked to this group. I don't know that that's good or bad, but they're not the exclusive burglary group for Long Grove, which is not surprising. We do have, you know, the roof burglars that come through that, you know, prey on people that are home, send them out of the house. A lot of those groups will resort to general breaking entry if no one's home, so they go up there, they're not really in the neighborhood, they have a reflective vest on in the radius, and they look like a utility company or a fence company or whatever they're opposing. And, you know, they told us that it's a problem on that, and that's what it looked like this was. On video, there's a couple guys on foot, and after they sort of make out that the house is unoccupied, the vehicle pulls in and pulls around the residence. South American group, they all come in on foot, they park at places that are on golf course or green space or walk the trail, whatever. They'll get dropped off a mile away, probably hang out around dusk, till it's totally dark, and then either find the houses that are unoccupied, or wait for somebody to leave. Go, you know, pick up a kit for sports or mutual lessons or go grocery shop, whatever it is, and like I said, they're in a house in minutes, so they don't, they don't have to specifically target. The house is that, a broad vacation or have multiple homes, whatever, they do because those are easy pickings, but-
What recommendations do you have then for people?
Um, so that's what I shared earlier back in April, was basically just, you know, well at property, cameras are a little bit of a deterrent. I mean, these guys are very bold, they'll go into houses that they know they're on camera, so they, they know they're gonna get in and out in a hurry. They know what their average response time is probably, you know, they're gonna have minutes to get out of there. And honestly, if they're leaving on foot across the golf course, it's bad, there's nobody that's gonna intercept them generally. It's an impossible thing, there's, you know, the crews aren't out there to encounter them, and it wouldn't stop if they were. So it stops, I know a lot of the neighbors live in off fences, so that, you know, it's not a surefire thing, but it slows people down anyway. Lighting, cameras, and alarms, like I said, they do make the second story entry to avoid the alarms, you know. But there's, you know, outdoor motion detectors and proximity detectors, those are probably more useful in these cases because they don't even have to get up to the house to alarm. Whereas if these guys are making entry and they're setting the alarm off on the way out, if there's a motion detector at the back lock line, you know, they flash the driveway alarm, stuff like that. If people are alert once you're in, once they're on the property rather than once they're in the house, that type of stuff. It would all end with people taking their way up to the house, and then the manager sees for sure if there's somebody, and the guy will feel alarmed. But it's pulling in an alarm. Do the vacation program, we're checking out houses, and we always recommend people- Some divers and that type of stuff. A little bit in this, but again, these are professionals, so they know what to look for, they know, you know, winter's right around the corner. Do the gills seem to like the snow here, and I think it's because these piles are passed so easily, so. They were here in the middle of December last year, and they were here well into the cold, probably the first cold month, during which no one there had gone, but, you know, to go like Southern California and enjoy the weather out there, well, they, like, blew it. I do think it's more to pass their entry and exit than it is that they're fair weather people, but.
This certainly sounds very discouraging, and I'm curious-
Extremely frustrating.
Do they ever get prosecuted?
I would say there's been a number of arrests on them.
The fly people were prosecuted.
The state of things being as they are, they're rarely helped because they're property crimes, and these are people that aren't supposed to be here anyway, so. It's no surprise to us that they don't go to court, so, you know, they get let out and they're supposed to return to court, and they're not, they're not in that state any longer, they're not in the United States any longer.
So the time and trouble and cost that you're doing, which I respect what you do, kind of-
Our best hope is that they get picked out, they have enough warrants, that some federal entities decide to have them shipped out. The guys that are sitting in Nashville are on ice detainers right now, you know, if they were sitting here though, or a sanctuary city in Longgegan, if they're in our jail, they don't hold on to that much, so.
So prevention is what's really important.
Yeah, and again, this is hard because they're coming up to the backside of the property, so, you know, roving patrols through the neighborhoods, everything, well, that does help with the other burglaries. And as I would tell you, in this, on the last week, they had a vehicle, so they came in on the road, they weren't sneaking around or anything like that. And, you know, and that, these are often rental cars, so if it's an silver SUV or whatever went and they run the thing, it comes back to play, credit with somebody's identification, so they're just marked backwards. But usually, these groups will get picked up somewhere in an in-progress call, and then we can kind of backtrack to who was in that crew and who was involved in that one relative, you know.
And then we can let them go. Okay.
It's very frustrating.
Where's the demand?
I'm sorry?
Who's on the other side of this? They're shipping things out of country to be sold to, hmm?
They don't go there.
Okay, I just don't-
Jewelry and handbags and watches, I mean, people take that anywhere, and we're talking, fully up, doors with hundreds of thousands of dollars of stuff that cost them zero, so it's all profit.
Yeah, but anybody here who buys something that seems very cheap is also contributing to the line too.
What's that you've seen eBay and places like this several years ago?
The group that we're dealing with, they export their stuff, I mean, it doesn't show up in pawn shops, they're, they aren't, you know, your typical drug users that are turning stuff right around for their personal use or anything like that. They're not selling it on a trunk down in the city, this stuff gets packed up, shipped off, I'm assuming they probably have flyers probably all over the world, so. I mean, these guys get picked up and they have seven golf passports from all different countries on that, so that isn't a unique problem in the United States even. This is, we've gained a lot of knowledge, done some good information sharing in the last five years or so. But for sure, we've had them in our area, I know for certain, they've been DNA linked back over a year ago, but prior to these investigations, I've done evidence and technical work for the last eight years. And I process things down here that bear a striking resemblance to these crimes, so they've been operating longer than I think anybody had them on their radar. But there's a lot of burglars out there, so that's, if we prevent these, there's other ones, so again, like, we're encouraging, obviously, people getting money out, walking, that shouldn't be. Cars, because you have the run-of-the-mill burglars also, and daytime is the popular time for burglaries because there's fewer people home. Covid has changed that a little bit because so many people work from home now, but we really didn't see a big left in burglaries, if people home as much as they. That's, you know, not just unique, but there's a little bit of a curve when everybody was locked down for a short while, because personally, everybody was home, but unfortunately.
Thank you for that update, any other questions?
I just have a quick one.
Yeah.
Do the victims have pets? Maybe a dog?
I would say not very commonly, and often they'll get people that are on vacation for a few days, you know, a lot of them like weekend trips. Yeah, I mean, you get a big dog, and usually, usually the dogs are probably the most surefire way of keeping people out of your house.
Yep, they hear a barking dog, I think they would-
But that's provided your big dog has access to your mattress bedroom because these people are pretty bold and they're gonna know that you're probably not, you know, a wild one. Bring that house if you're not sure, maybe you do, I don't know, but there's a good example about what they're doing, and I know that's discouraging, but all I can say is whatever, whatever steps we can take to make it more of a system to deter them. It's not gonna go away, but we might be able to lessen it a little bit. I did, like I said, when I talked back in the spring with Royal Oak, I'm sorry, Royal Melbourne, they have a car path and stuff out on the golf course. I said, hey, maybe one random day a week, he's been guys out with a flashing light on there, and maybe it discourages the one odd, you know, person that's out there and, and it's probably, I don't know. You know, if they were getting targeted heavily, and they will continue to, if it hits their need, and, you know, one of the phones recovered in Nashville, the Google search history was where did Rick Street pull up in Nashville.
Well.
Very sophisticated, you know, but it's not easy, right? I mean, then-
So besides looking poor.
And it's the same thing with the, you know, the car thieves, that when it was really building and they're hitting, and really targeting high-end cars, which they would come up from the city and get up on the appropriate address, go to the real estate neighborhood, over a days or BMWs every night. Because they would just Google where these neighborhoods, and they'd go, and they'd go on each side, and it was just exciting, I don't know why, but they're trying.
Well, thank you for that report, any other comments or? Go ahead.
We're just gonna ask, how do they gain access to the second floor?
So we've seen them use ladders that are out and about, they use ladders in golf courses, they do ladders that have been outside, those deck patio chairs. Really good climbers, I guess, I don't, short of like the acrobatics or circus people that stack on each other's shoulders, I don't know. Because we've had, we've had second floor windows broken into that there wasn't a ladder at, did they bring a telescoping one? I don't know, we haven't recovered anybody with one, because that was something we were looking for for a while, was when there was a couple vehicles that had been stopped. They kind of fit the bill for the people we were looking for, but they don't, they never had a ladder with them, but yeah, there's more of using things of opportunity, so. I mean, people have outdoor couches or whatever, and they'll just end up on hand and work their way up there. And I can tell you one from yesterday, one of the pictures that I saw, they had tied a bed sheet off the second floor balcony to exit, so. The old school jail protective suit, I think.
It teaches us to fire escape as a kid, right?
Yeah. Jenny, do you have a question?
Well, actually, can I ask, but, you know, I would think that a decent attorney is getting a good state, I'm imagining they're not gonna do-
And that was something that I recommended earlier on, back in the spring, was a lot of these kids are just right out in the open. I mean, and again, I know you can't lock down anything and everything, and everyone still lives like in prison either, but, yeah, you can turn your mattress closet into a secured area, and they're not gonna be able to get in and out in three minutes with $200,000 of loot.
I think it would be a good investment.
Right, and, you know, you can get large, you know, fireproof gun safe type things for 500, 800 bucks, and, I mean, you can dump all kinds of stuff in those vehicles you have. Yeah, I mean, most of the 200 is just out for the taking unfortunately, and-
Getting those gun safes into the basement, that's the problem.
What's that?
It's getting those gun safes into the basement.
Into the basement, these are not in the basement.
Put them in your trunk.
Grabbing them, yeah, pay the delivery guy, but yeah, I mean, you can convert it into a more secure, safer state type room.
Just taking a little bit more time, or less time to get stuff done.
Yeah, I think ideally, if you have them secured, and they actually had to force entry into a safe or strongbox or whatever, and you had that alarm, you're giving ample time for a response. As it is right now, they're bypassing the alarm by going to the second floor and loading up a couple backpacks full of stuff, they're in a house and probably under a bed, so they could, again, they're leaving on foot, so they're not taking more than they can carry away. We have seen, not locally, but in some other areas where they, I think they kind of ditch stuff out on the course, and they'll probably double back, you know, and then make it to the car, make a couple trips to get other stuff. But that also might be one of the many multiple houses in the night.
Well, thank you for that report, we appreciate you being here.
Yeah, I wouldn't add anything more positive off the hook, I like, there's a tremendous amount of progress, unfortunately, it's gonna be more reactive if we're arresting people that have already committed it. And I don't know how much of a start that is, because you can either just send it out of here and come back under different information, or they just hop on and move on to the next state and make their way back here again. I will tell you, there's some real awareness, and Homeland is turning them around at the airports when they can identify them. They've identified, you know, even travel agencies that they commonly use, they know it's S A D related to travel agencies, so that kind of perks up on the radar, and they'll turn people around then. It is very family organized, like you see with White Cartel and type of organization, where it is, it's uncles and nephews and aunts and whatever, and children and their parents, whatever, all involved in the whole.
Well, thank you, thank you again Detective Fish, we appreciate it, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah.
And enjoy my information.
Yeah, I do.
Specifics, or they could help out towards, and other types of kinds of work, we have contact with it.
Okay, you need anything from us, let me know too.
Thank you.
Okay, there's one thing I didn't do to start the meeting, was to introduce our new Assistant Village Manager, what's up? Weack.
Weack.
Wyatt, Wyatt.
Okay.
I knew I was gonna do that wrong, I tried to actually, I was gonna do a-
So cool.
So welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a consent agenda in front of us, there's one minor edit to the, at least I found, and else ones, and added to the notes from the last meeting. I'm not a village manager, so that, it's village manager, that should be changed, a lot of them under Greg's updates should be changed to village manager Jackson, not Jacob. But I don't know if there were any other edits or concerns, otherwise I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
She said I need to give you my check and-
Oh, okay. Nothing, we'll leave that there, right, so moved by Trustee Michelle, seconded by Trustee O'Reilly.
I'm just second.
Oh, did you second her?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so seconded by Trustee O'Connor, okay, roll call please.
Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Schnuchy.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, there is no Village Planner's Report tonight, is what we're saying, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Then we have the Village Engineers Report, we have Engineer Perry on the line tonight on Zoom.
All right, so the Engineers Report is in the board packet for tonight, we'll just kind of go through a couple things here. The first one on there is the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge, and I would need to get a little help from Manager Jackson on this one. If the, there's anything to report from the meeting yesterday, or Trustee O'Reilly, excuse me, you were at that meeting as well, I believe.
I'm gonna report on it later.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Perfect, okay, moving on, the temporary traffic choker is still on Checker Road, it'll be out there for one more week, so just to give you an update on that, the-
Any feedback?
We've got some feedback that some, some residents asked about the location and the choice of it, that we responded to. Another resident did not like it, Waste Management stopped one of our guys while they were actually putting it out there and said, this is great, so, kind of a, kind of a mixed bag, but-
Why?
What did Waste Management like about it?
Waste Management said that this is great, it curtails speeding through there and makes their job safer.
Oh, because they're stopping multiple times, they don't like moving through.
People may be getting out of their truck, and that makes it-
Yeah.
Jeff, the comments that we've received via email are in the Google packet, so if anybody needs to look at those, I've placed them in the board packet under a subfolder for traffic comm communication.
I mean, the only thing that, I'll just bring it up right here, that concerns me is that people are saying it's hard to see at night, so, that's the only thing that I worry about, right? So we've got a few complaints about that being dangerous at night.
Seem that way.
Were you able to see the stop sign?
Stop sign is, you know, big as life, it's pretty-
Okay, well then maybe it's not, so that's some of the feedback we've gotten.
Does the choker itself have reflective tape?
Yep, oh, okay.
Please go down to the choker room because the Jersey barriers are intermittent, and then there are the horses, you know, and they're kind of scattered, I'm sure it's from the wind.
I went by there on Sunday, so yeah.
I'm sure it's-
But I don't know. But I don't know.
I do believe I heard, uh, Trustee Tanucci ask a question about reflective tape, and there is reflective tape on those, uh, jersey barriers.
There's a lot. There's a lot.
Asking if there was.
No, there is a lot.
That should help at night.
Yeah. Okay, keep going.
Uh, then the, let's see, the, uh, ITIP grant application just noted that that was submitted by the end of September. And other than that, uh, those are the, the updates that I have. I know that, uh, the village hall will be, uh, discussed here at, uh, other, under, under another agenda item. So unless there's any other questions, I will, uh.
I, I have one question about Route eighty-three. Are they done, done, or are they coming back? Cause there's a big mound of dirt there.
So the project substantially complete. Obviously, the, the cleanup and all that needs to take place. I'll, uh, I'll get the schedule on that.
Okay. I have a question, Jeff.
Yeah.
Um, the covered bridge and the ESI controversy, shall we say, that's been on this agenda for probably two years now.
That's on me. I've got to move forward and tell them they've got to come to reconcili- reconciliation with, you know, I guess they overcharged us. Happened before I got here.
Right.
I'm, I'm looking at some of the, uh, invoices. Jeff's gotten me the information. I've got to get with the, kind of.
Cause we, my memory, we told them what we want, and when they made the presentation after their drawings, it was like, this is not what we said.
That's what, that's how it was explained to me this morning.
So. What are we talking about? Uh, ESI, years ago, you know, when, it, it's just an item.
When we were trying to make lemonade out of lemons and we said, please, can you come and help us?
Yes, the, the first several, first couple of drawings were not the steel structures that we said we wanted.
Remember we said.
Is the bounce of steel structure? It's about the money charged for that.
They overcharged. Jeff, you wanna go ahead and?
Yeah, I wanna clarify here, this, this, uh, money that's being chased, for lack of a better term, it's due to a construction overage, uh, that was the result of an error on the plans. And, uh, this goes back, and I believe this was, uh, interim manager bawling, uh, had agreed to pay the contractor, so there's no liens or anything like that on the bridge work itself. Uh, and then ESI was promptly contacted that they were gonna be responsible for this money, which was about $35,000. And this is the item to, uh, get that payment back from ESI on. So it was a construction overage. All of the, the design and the redesign that was, uh, discussed, hashed out and, uh, settled, um, in, uh, as a different discussion with the board.
Just clarify for, for me, this is about the steel, not about the cover?
Uh, this is about the abutment work. The, uh, Dave, yes, it does not have anything to do with the cover.
I can only hear one voice. Jeff, what did you say?
Correct. This is not the cover. This is the abutment project.
Okay, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, what else you got there?
End of report.
End of report. All right. Well, keep us, will keep us moving then. Uh, we have, uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion and consideration approval of an ordinance amending the Long Grove Village Code regarding connections to public water systems. What we're trying to do here is make the same language for sanitary sewer connections, uh, apply that same language to public water system connections.
I move, I move for approval of an ordinance amending the Long Grove Village Code regarding connection to public water.
Okay, moved by Trustee O'Con- uh, Trustee Michio, uh, just seconded.
Oh, whoops.
Uh, seconded by Trustee Michio. And that's roll call.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Michio.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Oh, come back to me.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Oh, kidding, aye.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly here. Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion, motion carries. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration approval of age, world architects for services related to rebuild, remodel the village hall.
I have a question regarding this one.
Well, does Village Manager Jackson want to introduce it first, or, um, provide us?
It's, uh, we, the village board had agreed to allocate the ARPA funds that we received from the federal government, uh, 1.074 million, uh, for the rehabilitation, rebuilding, or expansion of the existing village hall. Um, or to identify someplace else that a village hall may go. Uh, we, uh, myself and, uh, President Jacob, Trustee Tanucci, met with Deer Park. Just to kind of go over there and take a look at what they've done, because they pretty much were in the same situation we were. They had a dilapidated, uh, building that they ended up raising and constructing a new building. So we wanted to get a feel on how that worked, how much that cost, just kind of get a sense of it. And, uh, that's how we were connected with this architectural firm, uh, who's, has experience doing this. They're based out of Palatine. One of their presidents are here this evening. Matt's here this evening. Um, we're looking to engage this firm for the purpose of assessing our needs and come up with a plan, uh, as to, uh, how, how to best expand or, or build on the current campus. And if, if it's even viable within the money that we have allocated from the ARPA funds. And that's what's before you this evening. The cost of the, uh, services is $12,500. That money would be applied to the ARPA funds.
There's a, a sentence here that surprised me. The building is located on the same property as the Ruth Barn and the historic one-room schoolhouse structure, both owned by the Historical Society. Is that accurate?
My understanding is that, that they belong to the Historic Society when the, am I correct, Trustee? The, uh, the, uh, when we had an issue with the Ruth Barn early in my tenure, they, uh, yeah, it was automatic that it was the, uh, Historic Society that came and took care of the repairs and the corrective action to that building. So yes, it's my understanding it belongs to them.
Just surprised me. Did, they own the structures, not the land?
The land, the land is the village, uh, belongs to the village.
Okay.
The structures are theirs.
And they, I'm just curious, does anybody know when that was? When, many?
I don't know.
Well, so.
I do know that.
I'm just curious.
In the two buildings that run in excess of 40 years.
Just curious. Okay.
Yeah, no, and one of the thoughts was, and I'll just comment really quickly, is where that barn is, if you move that barn, you can put the, a new village hall right behind it.
Sure.
That barn just has to go somewhere, right?
If the barn is moved.
Well, that's, that'll be answered.
I, I have a question. It's, it, this seems fine, but it, it presupposes that we're only looking at this property.
No, this gives us what we can rule in and rule out.
Say that again?
We may find out that we can, based on what they do here and look at the, it may not be cost effective for us to.
Okay.
We may have to go somewhere else.
Yeah, we may have to end up retrofitting the building to an expense that may exceed what we're able to afford, so.
Is it this group's preference that this is our first choice? Just asking.
Well, if somebody wants to, uh.
Well, I have a question that I thought our issue was septic. We can't enlarge our septic.
We found, we found a way to run the septic across to the other field, so.
Like, why are we having this conversation? Cause I thought we couldn't.
Yeah, we can put a new septic in the property.
That's a fair question. Let's just ask everyone. Um, I don't know if this is your preferred, but a solution you want to look at, right? Um, I'll, I'll just ask it that way. Either, either preferred or a solution you want to look at. And I'll just start with you, Trustee Tanucci.
I'm keeping an open mind. I'd like to see what's available, what's feasible, and what the recommendations are, so I'm not ruling anything in or out.
Okay. Uh, Trustee O'Connor?
Yeah, I feel the same way. You know, we, we have to know what's possible before, to, to make an, I think, to make an intelligent decision, cause.
And that's the purpose of this stuff.
Um.
Sure. Oh, go ahead, sir.
No, I, uh, I'm, I'm curious about how this room is too small for the, um, board meetings. I think that was in here. And, I mean, I, I, when we first met, we were munderly, you know, and, and to me, that's just, that's an, you know, an en- enormous waste of space in there, all that middle stuff, you know, even if you have. We get a lot of people when they're upset about things.
There, the space is also used for other, other things outside of us. I mean, when the HDL GBA comes in here, it's a much bigger size than what we have in here. Um, the, uh, if it's an issue with, uh, the AC or the PCZBA, it could be, it could, it could be a little bit bigger. Um, I, I also think with, I'm sorry, Trustee. I, I was gonna say, I also think, given the, um, I think COVID gave us a realization that some space would probably be better than.
Got it. I understand.
Being, being so confined, um, I'm not, I'm not suggesting by, uh, any shape, form, or fact, munderly, they use as an, as a hearing room too. I mean, that's a pretty sizable room.
It is.
Um, I'm not sure we're talking about something that size, but something bigger than what we have.
Just, I just, I didn't know if it was like a multi, gonna be a multi-purpose room, that that's what we're aiming for, where if civic groups want to meet or the.
Like a community room.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Michio?
Honestly, I'm, I'm going back and forth on this a lot. Um, personally, doesn't want to waste any money talking about renovations. I just want to raise it and do something. It would be nice if we could keep it here. Um, although I do think downtown would be an appropriate spot as well, more visible. Um, I just, having been up in Greg's office, I think of all of the work always takes the rest, I'm not sure I want. I'd like that it's north, I guess, but, um, I don't like to move forward with a really energy efficient, um, part. Well thought, thoughtfully designed. Um, I, I guess I'm open to this, but, um, I don't, I don't know, I just seeing in the state of this town, the, the building, it gives me class.
Okay, and I don't know that we're talking about, um, you can use some of this space, the attic up there, the attic would become an attic, right?
Yeah.
So then you have basically a frame of building in the back maybe.
Right.
So that's kind of what we're thinking and visioning, but, and that's still somehow connected to this, and this is still some usable space, historic space.
So this could be repurposed and staff offices could be in another building and need to be attached.
The second floor should not be used for anything.
No, it'd be, yes, it'd be returned to an attic, right? So.
I'm not sure people should even venture up for files.
Okay. Uh, Trustee O'Reilly?
Um, I'm strongly attached to the, the, um, historical at- at- atmosphere here. Um, the history of Long Grove is very important. I think to most residents, history is very important. And I'm looking forward to the time, having mentioned the barn and the, and the school, uh, some years ago. There were 70 kids going through here two and three times a week of school kids who were learning that this was where their government took place. And they then went home to mom and dad and said, I was at the village hall of Long Grove today. And so all those people then knew that this building was here and that these people were here. And you can perhaps turn the temperature down a little bit, or turn the temperature up a little bit in the summer and get some, some more efficiency. But the important thing is the historical nature of this town leads one to want to save this building. Am I totally 100%? No. If it's, if it's a loss, a total loss, then yes, I would, I would change my mind in this location.
That helps a lot.
And just.
But wait, there's more.
From a historical perspective, recall that I was the one who started looking at the village hall.
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah. Although that's not way true. Chris started it. Chris started me thinking about doing the village hall.
All right, so, um, Trustee Chris Meyer, please.
I'm done.
I'm just gonna wait five seconds and see. Um, I think that what's being proposed does need to occur, so I'm not opposed to this, but I do not think that we should pri- pri- I, I disagree with prioritizing this as the top. Um, keeping this, keeping this building as an historic building for historic purposes perhaps, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to that at all. I slightly disagree. I think that a lot of people are moving to this village, looking for the services and the schools and the open space, and that we are going to, sooner or later, going to be asked to, uh, consider how big our government is. And that will obviously be in partnership with all the residents. So I would like to make sure that we do look at other opportunities in a, you know, in a prudent way.
Thank you. Trustee Barowski?
Interesting comments. Um, do we have data that verifies beside the census growth that there are like a lot of kids moving in? Do we have data backed it up by chance realtors? Do we know that?
I think it's normal. I don't have it in my fingertips, but I think it's normal.
So I disagree. I mean, I've got three boys that moved away and won't come back, cause, well, a lot of reasons, but.
I offered my kids money to come back.
I know, right?
Senior, senior.
The sheriff just told us one of the reasons why they want to come back here, right? Okay. Um, okay, regarding this topic, so the $12,000 something dollars in this proposal gets us a concept, but what's the next step? How convertible is that concept to either this architecture firm or another architecture firm to actually draw blueprints? Is this like IP owned by these guys, or is the IP owned by us that we could transfer it to another architect? Or how close do we get to blueprint-ready plans after we spend $12,000?
Do you want to let, let Matt Pickle answer that question, since you're here tonight?
Sounds good. Thank you, Greg. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, I, I appreciate all the comments. It's, it's fun to hear, uh, the perspectives and, and the, um, and just all of the, uh, the different ideas out there. And, and by no means do we have any, um, presupposed solutions, right? The, the idea of this study is really to prepare you with the, uh, the facts that will help you make informed decisions, which I, which I think was, was stated clearly by, by more than one of the trustees. So, uh, to the question about what you get at the end of this report, uh, there will be, um, a, a conceptual design. So, uh, it will tell you, um, you know, not only what are the capabilities of the existing building to accommodate expansion, uh, as one of the options that will be, uh, uh, explored. Uh, but what are also the, uh, issues within the existing building that would need to be addressed as part of that? So from a structural standpoint, an HVAC standpoint, an exterior envelope standpoint, uh, you would have an, an, an analysis and an assessment of, of what things would need to be done. Um, in terms of shovel-ready, no, uh, not, not by any stretch of the imagination, uh, is that what you will have. But you would certainly have, uh, the, the, the building blocks to proceed to that, uh, next stage. Um, certainly, we would hope that we are the, uh, you know, the, the firm that you would choose to do that with, uh, but the plans will be yours. So if you were to say, you know what, this is great, we're gonna take it under consideration and six weeks or six months or six years from now, uh, decide to move forward with another firm, uh, you own this, this information and, um, you know, you can, you could proceed with that.
Thank you very much. One more question, comment, um, maybe to Greg more than anybody. Um, again, I still want to see if we can consider putting a space in for recyclables and for the, um, medical collection, the pharmaceutical waste collection and reuse issues of. How we put that into a space that is not smelly, but yet attractive and yet accessible, right? So I didn't really see any of that in the documentation.
I mean, they're, they were planning to sit down and interview us and talk about our needs and, and, uh, I'll make sure that's, uh, certainly in there, made that.
If you guys.
Describe that before.
I support that. Thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. I support it for sure.
Thank you.
You've got the heat on.
It, it just got warm, didn't it?
Yeah, I can hear it ramping up as we're sitting here.
What's, what's going on here? Why did the? I'm like going, is, can we turn that off? Oh my gosh, I'm like so like, I'm getting.
Yeah, all of a sudden.
What happened there? All right, that's why we need a new building. Um, what other questions do you have? I mean, on this, is any?
I wanted to, I wanted to ask if you had done rehab buildings before.
Matt, can you answer that?
All right. Yes, absolutely, we have. Um, as was mentioned, that was an option that was, uh, studied at length, uh, with, uh, your neighbors, uh, in Deer Park, uh, before they ultimately decided to, to construct new. Um, but, um, we have, I'm, I'm struggling to think of an, of an example that's akin, you know, that's similar to yours exactly, but, uh, but we certainly have done a number of adaptive reuses and, and remodeling's of existing facilities.
Thank you.
Other questions, concerns, I mean?
Any consideration for the other locations or other concepts then? Or are we just like saying this is it, this are all eggs in this basket, or what are we doing outside?
That's what I was asking, yeah.
That's, that's not my understanding.
That's correct. I'm, no, your understanding is correct. Right, it was that we're not, that we're not looking, this is, we're not committed to what we're doing here. We're trying to explore that option, how much it would cost us, and even if it's viable. This, this option may be totally dismissed, and we may put in that other space, leasing space, um, certain
So, is there a parallel plan, or are we waiting for Plan A to come back and say, eh, it's good, or?
There is, um, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm having discussions with the fire department right now. They're looking to relocate, and, uh, potential of, uh, securing that, that property. Uh, we have looked at space at Landmark, um, as potential rental space, that space is still available. Um, so, we, we are looking at, we are looking at other options.
When will all of this come together? Like, when they finish this, will we be able to examine? And is there, so that's three branches you've identified, is there, are there others?
We can, there, there's space that we could potentially look at for a ground-up construction outside of the campus here. There's spaces all over the place, quite honestly, that we can, we can certainly look at, um.
We could go north.
Empty spaces in Long Grove.
Well, we've got, we got, we got up north on E3.
Oh geez.
Now, that one I do feel strongly about.
But, uh, the, uh, there's discussion of the houses being for sale that run across from the firehouse. Uh, that was just brought to my attention, uh, from the triangle going back towards art studios. Yeah, I was trying
Hold on to your wallet.
Well, Chris, we can do it on top of the water plant, right? So, that was your idea.
No, I, I mean, it's the, yeah, I really believe we could expand that building somehow, I really do. I don't know how, but I'm not smart enough, but it seems
I, I assume that if we see
By the executive
Whatever we're going to glean out of this, that we then decide to stay here? Or do we then open the, the window and look at, at all the possibilities?
That's why I was asking the question, cause I
Oh, cause they, they were pointing what I
Isn't that a rock song, Clash, should I stay or should I go?
And I, and I think this is I've had conversation with the fire chief already, he's been having, you know, he's had conversation with his board about the acquisition of properties at, and, uh, the amount of cost, the cost involved with the construction of a new firehouse. Lots about this to me, so we're having those conversations. I, I've kept Landmark's, uh, management company, uh, in constant communication. So, I'm keeping all these things going, this is just another piece of it.
So, realtors, could we
No, he turns hardly. The great interest in the fire station that would work is that we don't need all of it, but the HCLGPA could use the others. That's a possibility, that's floating out there. And, and I don't know what the fire department's gonna charge.
Yeah, and, and we've had that discussion about, uh, Chief Segal going back to his board and talking about, okay, lease time, over what period of time, how much would it be worth cost? Uh, Jeff went into the, I think Jeff was with me when we toured the building, or, or perhaps not, but we walked in there and did a walk-through, wanted to see how expensive or how, uh, extensive a build-out would be in that building. And I've gotta tell you, they, they, they've kept it in good shape. Um, the office space, the training space, conference room, those type of things, um, are, are more than adequate for us, and
But they don't have water.
They, they don't, and as a matter of fact, that, that we were talking to them about getting on water, and then they decide, but well, we're removed, we don't need to do that, comes, comes, comes into play, so.
To be clear, I mean, i- if the results of this come up that this is viable, I would still be in favor of exploring other possibilities, not ad nauseam.
Makes sense. So
I wanna fix it.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I would make a motion to approve both, um,
Second.
Okay, so, this is a
They can do all the words, they can do all the words.
This, this is a, uh, approval of an ordinance, uh, da, 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 da.
No, this would be authorization of village manager.
Go ahead.
Authorization of village manager to, uh, engage, uh, old, uh, architects, uh, for the village hall review.
Okay, so that was moved by trustee O'Reilly. Uh, Chris.
Where's the money come from, what budget?
Our fund.
Comes out of our funds?
Yeah. We have the funds sitting there. A million, what do we have, a million?
Million seventy-five thousand.
Okay, second by
Second.
Uh, by trustee Kritzmeyer, roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Brodsky. Trustee Michelle, hi. Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Taduji.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Thank you, that was a very clear answer, by the way.
What do you mean, quick answer?
It's clear.
Oh, clear.
I think, I thought he didn't
Yeah.
It was your question, but I thought he addressed it well.
Yeah. All right, so, discussion and consideration approval to engage, hun- hun- strategic partners for service-related to a hotel feasibility study. Um, so, may I have your accent, I'll let you introduce this one too.
So, over the past several months, I brought, I had, I brought this to the board's attention at our last meeting in, uh, September. Uh, looking at some potential economic community development options for the property on the South 15. What keeps coming to us right now is dense residential development, which is something that, uh, the comp plan has slated for the, uh, commercial. It's currently residential, uh, zone residential, but there's been some activity with the Pearl Football Team in the Arlington Heights area, and there's been discussions about tourism and, uh, room capacity, uh, as far as hotels. Our, our location may be a location that can serve that gap, that may or may not exist when everything's finally done. Uh, we are certainly a tourist attraction by our footprint here in Long Grove. We've made strong efforts in bringing connectivity with the Robert Parker Coffin, uh, road pathway, and then we're looking to expand at the Kissick in the next year plus. Uh, again, connectivity, uh, for both bike and pedestrian. There's just, uh, uh, I think there's a great deal of potential for a boutique-style hotel at that location. And as, uh, the question was asked, uh, two weeks ago, what do we get from, uh, revenue stream from a boutique-style hotel? And Vic pointed out that the hotel motel tax, uh, can be applied to tourism dollars, and those dollars can offset, uh, expenses that were currently used, or dollars we're currently using in the general fund for those, uh, same type of expenses. Uh, it's the, also the, uh, businesses that pop up with a hotel that, uh, there's a great deal of potential, whether it's restaurants or other amenities that complement a hotel. Uh, it'd also allow, it'd be in our TIF district, which also, uh, and it could open up the door for the expansion of our water and our users, which can offset some of the increased expense we have because of our lack of users with, with our water system. So, it'll help, uh, take away some of that expense, or offset some of that expense in the water fund as well. Uh, this company has done, uh, I am familiar with them from not only their work in other areas, but, uh, when I arrived at Winthrop Harbor, they were just completing, or just completed a, uh, a study for North Point Marina, in that area up there for a, for a potential hotel. And discussions about, we've had discussions about hotels off of Russell Road and Sheridan Road up there as well. Uh, their, their work product, I took back to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources in, uh, communication with the director of the agency in Springfield. Her and her staff were impressed with the work and the detail and the data that they provided. And they, they didn't color, color anything in rose, you know, with, with rose glasses. They, this is what it is, this is what it'll take, um, this is viable, it's not viable. And I think that's something that we need to do, uh, as we try to increase economic development, both in the first TIF district as well as South Gate. We've gotta look at these opportunities, and at least, if nothing else, rule out that this may not work. And if, 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 then it puts us on a different path, or at least has us looking in a different direction. The study's thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, as Vic, and I conferred with Vic to make sure I, I was correct that this money can be, um, uh, applied from the TIF, taken from the TIF, uh, and, and, uh, because we are using it for economic development in that TIF district. And I would, uh, ask the board to give it its consideration.
Would there be any opportunities, I mean, how, would, we have a second TIF district. Um, I think this study has merits, not just for that particular property, but for, you know, con- information we might bring for economic development largely. You know, some of the stuff that they've said as part of their work product, I think, has applicability elsewhere. How much of it might we consider even something in the other TIF district? Maybe not the same kind of concept.
Like a different hotel, or are we talking?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, so we have the other TIF district, what about the hotel of Menards?
I, you know, would that cost another thirty-five thousand dollars? Or is there some level of like, okay, how much of this might be applicable to that or not?
Yeah, we, we, when we discussed, and I, I think Rob's on the line.
Rob is here, yeah, Rob, hi, picture beater.
I, when we did have the discussion, we talked about the South 15 and the triangle, just because of its proximity. I mean, the triangle's right there, so, um, Rob, can you answer that question?
It's not a very well-worded one, sorry.
If I understand the question correctly, um, you have two different TIF districts, and you're wondering if the results of the study would apply equally to both locations, is that correct?
Or at all, so, buyer, you know where the Menards is and
Not, not apply equally, would it apply at all to the other?
The work that you're doing here could be leveraged for that location, right?
Um, it, mostly, but it depends. So, I, obviously, we haven't started the work yet, so we need to get familiarized with the, both, both side areas. But since location, location, location are the top three, uh, factors in any real estate analysis, uh, any difference in location could impact the results. So, I, I would say, um, it would be good for us to know from the beginning, um, that, that this sort of the backstop location, and then we could give you a sense of that, um, during and, and at the end of the, of the process. I don't think, I mean, I don't think we would run too, um, pro formas for each site, but I think we could give you a sense of, um, how, how closely they would be in alignment. I, but again, because I don't know the character, characteristics, it's been a long day, uh, of the, uh, of the other site, I just wouldn't be able to say for sure.
Okay.
Can, can, can we expand it to absolutely include both?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We could, we could, um, we can do it two ways. We could just make a, make a super easy amendment of a few thousand dollars, or we could just, like, if you wanted us to do more work, uh, later at an hourly rate, you could. My experience is that it's easier to just like agree on a lump sum addition now, um, if the, you know, like I said, a few, that like, maybe like four thousand dollars. And, and then go ahead and
Send it one voice, ladies.
Keep, keep going, keep going, Rob, there's, uh,
Okay, if, if you wanna do that, and, you know, approve a contingent on this, this, um, addition, um, that, that then we would go and do paperwork with, with the team, um, yes. Uh, because ninety percent of the work is going to apply to both. Uh, but then we would have to do additional financial modeling and other things to have two scenarios and two sites. So, I would just say to you now, if you wanted to add that four thousand to the total, we can do the paperwork behind the scenes and, and get moving forward, if, if you'd like to get moving.
Can we do the aspect?
I, I think we can do one of three things. We can either just take the proposal as it is, we can have a modified proposal, uh, as Rob had suggested, with the additional four thousand, or what we can do is to move forward with the proposal as presented, and have Rob just get a little bit familiar with where the location is. We may determine that there's enough commonality to give us the information we need at this time without actually, uh, doing the kind of site-specific review for the, uh, Menards subdivision, and then take that up at a later time. I, I think that, I think that one of the underlying questions, go ahead.
Why couldn't we approve this with a not to exceed thirty-nine and give Greg discretion to negotiate the last bit?
Yeah, we, we certainly can, and I, I think part of the underlying question you might have had, Anne, was can we split the cost between the two TIFs? I think we can do that irrespective of whether we have a site-specific, uh, analysis of the, of the South Gateway TIF, or whether we just have a site-specific of the South 15. I think that, as, as Rob was just saying, most of the characteristics of the study are going to be applicable to the general region of the, of the village. Obviously, you have to drill down further to, to get a better understanding, but the value to both of the TIF districts, I think, will be there from the, uh, from the basic analysis that's gonna under, be undertaken. And, and Rob, if I've misunderstood what you were saying, or what your proposal said, then please correct me, but that was my takeaway.
Yeah, no, I think that, that, that sounds fine. Yeah. So, I, I, I don't have a preference, and we're, we're ready to get started either way. Um, so, I think you could go, uh, either route and just have that discretion to add on if we determine it's, it's necessary. I think one thing to be mindful of is that ultimately, you, we, so, one of the other sets of services we offer that I guess makes us a little unique is that at the end of the study, uh, we, if, if you deter, like, let's say we figure out that something's feasible, or feasible enough that you get behind the project and you wanna help it succeed and all of that, and you wanna go find a developer to develop it on your behalf, or, you know, with, with the same goals in mind, we run those developer solicitation and selection processes on behalf of the public sector. So, the only thing I would say, as it relates to having two different sites, is that, um, having the homework done on the site that would be ultimately selected to then put out for a developer, RFP process, um, you'll want that to be site-specific. So, that's not shocking to anybody, but that, just something to think about.
But, but hold on a second, we wouldn't be issuing the RFP, right?
No, we'd be looking, we were looking to turn around and, well, we could look at doing that, but I, my thing was to say, okay, this is developable, um, work with the property owner.
See where we are.
Right.
Art horse, I think, I, I think this is a good idea, and I would, I would be in favor of, of having them do a site-specific. I, and we all know, the other one's better on transportation, worse on charm.
Yeah.
And that's, that's exact, that's exactly right, you know, um, in, from where, where I'm looking at it. Um, to me, to put, if, if you talk about a boutique hotel, it's certainly not Old Hicks Road. Steps away from Menards, the shooting range we could've had, and the, the storage facility that is before us at this time. A hotel to me, in that location, would be something more like a Holiday Inn Express.
Right.
If, if you're, if you're talking something that's boutique, to me, that's, that says high-end. It, it says, um, courts, you know, nice, really nice sheets, and, you know, blah, 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 blah. But it's in reasonable, it's in walking proximity to restaurants, hopefully, that we can attract to the TIF district, and Sunset Foods in the, you know, the downtown, of course, and things like that. So, to me, one would, one would be kind of a Rolls Royce, and the other one would be more of, of
That's functional.
A Buick, perhaps, yeah, you know, something, it's two different marketing concepts, and, and you, you also need to bear in mind that the asking price on the South 15 is close, it's right at four hundred and eighty thousand dollars per acre. And, and if, if you're a developer, you, the land value of your package is commercial, it's usually ten, twelve percent of the finished product. I don't know who's gonna put a five million dollar building on an acre or less.
Yes.
No, no, I, what I'm saying is, to, to expand this study for both locations, when we have no when we have no, I mean, what if, what if a car dealership wants to be at the, the second TIF area? Have, have they called us? What? It's, it's, and that's another issue. I think we should be going out. I think we should, we should already know what we want closer than we know now in each of these TIF districts. I think we all pretty much envision restaurants, um, um, bars, nice bars, whatever, you know, crummy bars, I don't care, in, in the South 15, which, again, if we put a hotel there, is conducive to a breakfast restaurant, you know, like, we don't have one. Maybe, maybe a children's museum, maybe, you know, lots of things, okay? But I don't, I don't think we have enough of a vision of what we want to have happen on our second TIF. And, and for us to sit back and wait, we're going to get more of what we've been getting. And the reason we're getting what we're getting is because of half, $480,000 for an acre. If I'm a developer, I need to put townhomes in there cheap by gel, build them as fast as I can and turn and flip them and then go on and do it somewhere else. And that's the, that's the stuff we've been getting. We, we need to go out and find the people that we want. So, it, it sounds like money well spent to say, well, let's, as long as they're here, let's get a feasibility study for this location also. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure we're, I'm not sure we're at that point. No, pardon me?
For 10% more.
But.
Well, so hold, just hold that thought for a second. So, hold that thought, because, I mean, Chris has a setting. Jenny has a setting, so hold that thought. We're, Chris, you were ready to say something.
Well, I was, it was more of a question. I, but it's moved on. So, the, how many, how many hotel rooms would each of you envision on the South 15?
I would think a three to four-story building with probably 10 rooms on each floor.
Can I turn it around and ask Rob to tell us what boutique hotels typically were? How many rooms it would be and just his initial perception of the space? What's he, what's he thinking?
Sure. So, there are some things I can tell you today and then some things that obviously will have to wait. And, and just as a preface, just, I think what this discussion calls for once we get going is for some interactive sessions between you all individually, like a workshop or individual conversations to understand kind of vision, hopes and dreams. And then at the end of the study, we can come back and do like a workshop, like, if you have a, instead of a formal meeting like this, maybe a less formal work session where I could take you through the results, show you the two, you know, situations. One sounds like what could be certainly much different than the other, and we can go through it all and then figure out a game plan from there because you're starting to think about it in the right way. And, and again, if you're going to control your destiny, you do this. One of the reasons you're probably paying to do the homework. And second, it may be a reason that you want to have some control over the process and the outcome so that you're not just getting the lowest common denominator of whatever general developer wants to put up that's the baseline feasible. So, if, you know, you care about who you are and what you look like and all of that, that's part of the reason for the study. So, I'm very excited to sort of engage with you on that. When we talk about hotels that are viable boutiques versus, say, select service or limited service, they often can have a similar room count. One of the reasons is because in order to create enough economies of scale and throughput to support a general manager and all those kind of people who have to be there regardless, you need usually about 70 to 80 rooms to start to be really efficient as a hotel. Otherwise, you know, you get the smaller hotels, if you're not charging really high rates, you get the manager that lives on-site kind of deal, right? And you don't want that. So, the really small boutique would have to have very high rates in order to avoid that situation. So, typically, even a boutique hotel is going to have, you know, closer to 80 rooms than 40. And, but they, there are ones that are much smaller, but they just need to, to run a very high rate in order to get that, that revenue through there to support all the fixed costs. So, we can sort of take you through all the different pros and cons during the process, but it sounds like you guys have a lot of cool ideas. I'm anxious to sort of workshop those with you and, and get started, but other, happy to take other questions, too.
That answer your question?
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I was just doing the internet search, right? So, average Fairfield Inn hotel is like, oh, I forgot the number. Sorry. Uh, I forgot, I'll look it up again. Um, but anyway.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, all the brands, so, you know, Marriott has 34 brands under its umbrella and Hilton has like 30. So, all these different brands, they, they all have modules. And these modules are really backed into, designed by the bean counters, by the accountants, because they, they know that the rooms make the money and all the other stuff tends to, are, these are things I, I would have told you at the end, but we're having a teaching session here. So, all the other stuff, the restaurants, the ballrooms, the spas, all that, those are lovely to have, but they are very dilutive of profit. So, that's why you see mostly rooms-only hotels out there and you don't see a lot of people just randomly putting up high-end boutique hotels because they, they, they're not usually as profitable. So, so the modules that they came up with in terms of sizing, the brands have a lot of sophisticated things they can look at to say, okay, are we going to do the 90-room module, the 100-room module, or the 110-room module? But they're all kind of in that range because they know exactly kind of what the optimal profitability is and they've figured out how to build those hotels with three or four stories, you know, 20 or 30 keys on a floor, and that 90, 100, 110 range are those modules that they tend to have. And then only if you're like in a Nashville or a super booming area or an urban center would you have something that was much bigger. Like, you wouldn't have a 200-room Fairfield in Long Grove probably, but you might have a 90-room one. But in downtown Chicago, you may have a 200-room Fairfield.
So, can I move, we haven't heard from Kat and Jenny, so what's that?
So, yeah, um, if this development takes place in Arlington Heights, I understand there'll be things going on there all year long, all kinds of different events which would draw people to the area, create a demand for hotel rooms. I do agree that by Menards, that would not be a boutique hotel. That would be more of a standard, like the brands you were talking about. But I think the demand would definitely be there. And it's what, a 10-minute drive during?
It's a transportation.
And it's right next to the highway. It's a great location. So, I, I don't know about this $480,000 an acre issue. Maybe that's part of the study. Assuming we can get past that, that seems like a great place for just a, kind of a standard cookie-cutter hotel. Separately, we look at the boutique hotel here on the South 15. So, I think they're both viable for different reasons. Some overlapping reasons, but also for different reasons.
Not to talk, not to talk myself out of an immediate job, but here's a question. Do, does it make sense to wait until the Bears deal is looking more or less likely? Otherwise, we may have to run multiple scenarios. Not to get into the scenario game again, but that, it, I mean, you are nearby and if that does happen, there could be positive impacts to this hotel. We can't assume that, or we could. You could just tell us, you know what, assume it's going to happen. But that, that starts to get into multiple scenarios. So, um, just a question again, not to talk myself out.
You know, so the Menards, obviously, that's more dependent here, in my opinion. I was just going to say something. We have a downtown that is a destination, right? And some great establishments that people would like to, e- even in a corporate setting, stay here, knowing that they could easily get into our downtown for dinner, a beer, buying, have you. And in fact, I know that there's more and more people from my office coming this way to, to go out to dinner and so forth. So, to have a hotel in pro, close proximity or downtown is going to be good for our downtown, right? And the business is there and more business is coming in, in my opinion. So, I just, I just had to throw that out.
Especially if we could resurrect the wedding business.
The wedding business, absolutely, yeah.
It, it could be.
Could be. So, I didn't mean to derail it, but I just, I think that there is, is a demand here. I've always thought that. When I, during the festival and things like that, there's people that may want to, you know, come to the festival, stay overnight, et cetera. And it'd be great to have a hotel there. But I don't want to monopolize this. Jenny, did you?
Well, Rob actually said exactly what I was going to say. Is, is it make sense to wait until a couple of things that are outstanding kind of come into alignment? We're talking about the Route 53 corridor, we're talking about the Bears, Arlington Heights. Are we a little bit premature on this question? I would think, just from my working with Nina on the EDC, aren't there hotels, people that are already looking at this? And is there a chance people are going to come to us looking at this, like, locations with our, having this study?
Yeah.
Like a brainer? Because especially the Lake Cook location is right on off. But I, I am interested, I do think that boutique hotels downtown makes a lot of sense. So, I, I don't know. I, I guess I feel like maybe we need to wait for a couple of things to kind of fall in place. So, but maybe it would be good to get ahead of it. So, I, I think the other way. That was a very wish-washing answer.
Which you bring up. Oh, I apologize. I, I was going to say, you bring up a really good point that if people, you know, those are, there are always people out there thinking ahead and, you know, you all being prepared and proactive as opposed to reactive, somebody proposes something that you don't like, but they buy the property and so then they have control over it, it, it may be better for you to be armed with the education about what the market will bear and what your options are and all that before all the people start, you know, the speculators start sniffing around.
I was going to say that what, what appears to be a truth is that these are both totally different locations. And, and that's why I think doing the 39,000 now is to get ahead of the game, know where we are, know what's possible, and, and, and start today.
I would support that. I also, as I said, I think there are also going to be data that's not just hotel-specific that we will be able to understand and use for general economic development, particularly in this area, um, in the, in the downtown area.
I would also.
Agree.
So, I, I'm ready to make a motion to approve not to exceed $39,000 for whatever the wording was.
If I might suggest, yes, it would be to authorize the village manager to enter into a contract with Hunden for Hotel Market Studies in an amount not to exceed $39,000. It would be a TIF expense for both the downtown and the South Gateway TIFs.
Yeah, can we look at how we break that down? Because I think we might want to lean it towards downtown, but.
Yeah, I, I, I think that if we have that generically, that gives Greg a little better chance to examine where we are with the TIFs as well as where the, the emphasis of the studies will be.
Okay, that was moved by trustee O'Reilly. Seconded by?
Second.
By trustee Tanucci.
Can I ask some more questions?
Oh, please, yes.
Thank you. So, so Vic, explain the process to me. So, we get a proposal back that says we need to put 100 rooms into, to the South 15. We don't own the land. We can try to incentivize, we can try to motivate, we can try to put some tax incentive on there. But if you own the property, you says no, what's our recourse? I mean, what have we spent the money on?
Well, I, I think one of the problems that, there is a potential that we will have spent the money and it, you know, the study ends up landing on a death here. There's certainly that possibility. I think one of the problems is that there has been a lack of direction among the owners of the South 15 as to how that property might best be developed. And if we can give them some reasonable data on what might be a good approach, we then can also help channel their marketing efforts. And, and we even could provide, as you said, some incentives to bring that type of use to the village. Yeah, I think that, you know, we, we have had challenges with that property from the get-go in part because for a while there was a great diversity of ownership among them. I think since then, there has been the same type of potential development focusing on that property and it hasn't been really aligned with where we have been from our comprehensive planning. They may not think that a hotel has any viability. The study may change their mind. Or it may confirm their suspicions, I don't know. I mean, it, it's as important to know that it won't work as it is that it will work. I mean, you hope that it will work, but, you know, you don't want to be chasing your tail on that one if it just doesn't seem to be a viable location.
Fair enough. Is there any, is, you know, from anybody's experience, is there any cost sharing that might happen right now with both the owners? I'd like the Menards guy. If we went to the Menards guy and said, hey, look, dude, Bears coming in, maybe we want to run the study. You want to participate in paying for half of this? You can market your property, we can market the area better. Is there any thoughts of doing anything like that, or?
They won't support it because they're pocketed.
Well, let's turn it up. Yeah, but they like.
I, I would say that it doesn't hurt to ask. I, I would say it doesn't hurt to ask. I would not be holding my breath that they're going to come forward and, and offer any money to help support this. One of the things that the TIF is designed to do is to undertake market studies so that we might be able to channel development into those locations. And if we are successful, the increment from that will certainly have the payback. There's the risk that it won't, but, you know, that's, that's kind of why we're having the conversation as to whether this is a, a worthwhile investment and risk to, to see if there might be some opportunity for a successful outcome.
So, the boutique hotel is 80 rooms. Are we okay with 80 rooms on the South 53 every night? Is that what we want?
The South 15?
Yeah, sorry.
I wouldn't have.
I'd like to know how much parking is required for an 80-room hotel.
Probably 80 cars.
Not, we, we have ordinances and I know.
And that part of what we.
We can amend them, but are we taking up two acres? I guess what I'm getting at is are we taking up two acres of land? Are we taking up three acres of the 15? There, I, I know that, I, on that piece, I know that topographically, uh, all the water, the water right now goes toward the southeast corner. So, I'm, I'm, you know, and maybe that's irrelevant because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, okay, where 15 would it go? Who knows? I don't know.
I, I mean, I suspect we'll be getting some information as to the amount of land that that would consume. My expectation is it would not take off 15 acres. It wouldn't even come close. But what it will do is be a stimulus for ancillary development that presumably will have a little bit of sales tax generation and will otherwise get that property developed, which, as we all know, has been just kind of stuck in the mud for all these years.
Hey, so.
I understand all of that.
Can I ask a question, though, of, of, of Rob really quick on this, though? So, when we get, are we going to get something back about ancillary businesses? A hotel will pull in, is that part of your study? Do we get that?
It's not specifically called out in the scope. But we can certainly, we can certainly address it and, and I guess it just depends on how much detail you're looking for. Just, just as a, I guess, overview, we're, we don't just do, you know, generic hotel feasibility studies all day, all, uh, every day. We like to think of ourselves as destination development advisors. So, we're thinking about place all the time and, and how different uses synergize and create a one plus one equals three environment. So, I'm liking what I'm hearing about, you know, the 15 acres, the two acres for the hotel, which, by the way, is a pretty standard. You know, if you're, you were doing a 100-room hotel in the, in the suburbs that is generic, which I know you don't want generic per se, but two acres is about the size it needs. Needs about one car per key, uh, one, I mean, one parking space per key. And so, 100 cars is usually about. and so a hundred cars is usually about one acre, and then the other acre plus landscaping is the building itself. Um, of course, you could do some structured parking, too. I'm actually gonna drive down to Indianapolis tonight, as soon as we're done here, and stay in a suburban boutique hotel of ninety-nine keys that has structured parking. So, uh, I hope that answers some of your questions, and, and to the extent you want our commentary and thoughts on adjacent uses, and does this help, I mean, certainly, I can already tell you that if you don't have a hotel and you put, and you are looking for a mixed-use walkable district, and you add one that is of quality, that is certainly gonna enhance and synergize with the rest of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we...
What is the four thousand by?
Well, the four thousand was up to four thousand for the South Gateway.
Just please, just quickly, could you remind me of what, what the, for the four thousand, the other locations? What other, what information would we have on the second location?
Well, we, we, it, um, we would be running two separate P and Ls then, so we'd have your downtown boutique P and L, whatever that comes out to be, whatever we determine, and then the Menards site one would be probably more of a select service, uh, financial projection and, uh, results there. And it sounds like we're gonna have two quite very different, you know, products and results. But that extra four thousand, I mean, we're doing the, the market analysis applies to both, and then we sort of go in two different directions with the outcomes based on the site characteristics and the desires of the community, or leaders of the community. And so we got everything we need in both cases to run those, and so we're just doing additional modeling exercises and, um, you know, description of the outcomes, and I believe we have economic and fiscal impact in there to show what the tax spinoffs and job spinoffs are of, of, you know, onsite and in the community from that development.
So we have a live motion, it was moved by Trustee Riley, seconded by Trustee Tanucci. Questions I would ask for a roll call.
And, but before, sorry, I do apologize, it does not look like the economic and fiscal impact task is in the scope that was proposed to you. So, you will not see the tax impacts unless that was added, so I, I misspoke. So... You can certainly add it.
That way, that way, these guys can have a look at what the parcel even is and figure out.
Don't we have a live motion?
And, and he had said earlier that ninety percent of the information will be thankful of the basics.
I understand.
Yeah, so.
And, and if you're looking for, if you're looking for the fiscal impact, my suggestion would be that's something that Greg can talk with Rob about. If there is gonna be an additional component, we can come back and amend it at the next meeting, and, and just go from there. I think that if we, uh, you know, I think, I think there's some additional information that, that Rob and Greg can hash out, and if necessary, if there's gonna be an additional cost component, bring it back to the board.
What exactly is this game?
Dollars.
What's that definition? Tax revenue, health, could expect?
Doing a model like an actual forecast projection model.
And, and again, maybe, maybe Greg and, and Rob can get down to a little more detail about that to determine how much value it will bring to the village, and, and Greg can then come back to the board if, if he thinks it's worth it.
That, that's going to be over and above the thirty-five?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty...
But, right now, the motion, I understand, is for the thirty-nine, and that's to, to look at both the Menards site and the fifteen acres. Rob, Greg is authorized to do that, Rob and Greg can talk further about, you know, what other elements might be wrapped into this. If it's gonna have an additional cost component and has value, Greg can bring it back to the board.
Do you have a rough idea on what that would cost, or is that too much there?
I think that's an important part of... Didn't he just say that he was including it?
No.
No.
He said it wasn't included.
No, but then, but then he said, will, will it include it?
No.
No, not just... Rob, did you say you were including that in the, in the study?
It is not included in the study scope or proposal, the, the impact analysis is not. Um, but the thirty-nine does include the two scenarios for the two sites, just not impact either.
I know we're in the middle of a live thing, could, could you please say a sentence, a couple more sentences then about task seven in your proposal? What is it, and what isn't it?
So, um, very happy to explain that. So, at the end, when we're doing all the, if we figured out what's recommended, then we move into, uh, what we call the demand model, so there's a penetration model where the hotel comes in and penetrates the existing set, we see how quickly it, um, is absorbed into the hotel market, how it performs, so then that results in, um, average daily rates and occupancy levels, as well as other revenues related to any of the amenities that would be associated with a full or service boutique hotel. It's a uniform system of accounts for hotels, which is very specific revenues and expense line items, gets you down to a net operating income from that NOI line, we then start thinking like bankers, okay, what is this NOI support in terms of, um, a bank loan, um, based on today's lending terms for hotels of this type in this marketplace? And then what is the activity, what's the equity that this would support as well in terms of a equity investment? If that, if those two things, the equity and the debt together total more than we think the cost of the project will be, then you have a feasible project, if it adds up to less than we think the project will cost, then you have a feasibility gap, and in order to make it feasible, someone, typically the public sector, comes in and fills that gap in a variety of different ways. Um, so that's what you get in the demand and financial modeling exercise, take you all through that. The economic, fiscal, and employment impact analysis comes after that, and what that is, is that's basically a return on investment analysis for the public sector. So we did the private sector model, but let's say it's not feasible, and hotels are very expensive, and it's, there's a chance that what you envision may not be supportable in the marketplace, but you may really want it to happen, but you also may wanna know, well, what's this gonna do for us as a community? So, what this does, it says, okay, what are the new day trips and overnights that are gonna happen in Long Grove as a result of this hotel, mostly overnights, obviously, since it's a hotel? And so we then determine what are people gonna spend money on besides the hotel in terms of food, beverage, retail, transportation, and other? And how are they gonna spend that in the community while they're there? What taxes are those gonna generate? And what are the number of jobs onsite and in the community that will be supported by this net new spending to the community? So then we'll have a ten, twenty, or thirty-year impact model, your choice, whatever time period you want, to show what those fiscal and job benefits are to Long Grove, and then that can ha- help you understand if it's irrational to invest public dollars, maybe through the TIF, into inducing or luring a developer to do a project that might otherwise be too pricey for them to consider.
So this is currently more tailored to a private, to the property owner? Because we would be far more interested in the A step, task, if I'm understanding correctly. Is, is task seven necessary to get to the economic and fiscal?
Yes.
Do you feel that's a rough estimate and a promise that's a cost?
Am I hearing this wrong?
I, uh, I would probably say it would be for both, if we did both scenarios, or just the, the boutique one? Or just, do you want both? I can, I can give you both, I would say it would probably be another like, um, say another five for one and eight for both, so, so you'd be at, say, forty-seven, and you'd get fiscal impacts in two scenarios.
All right, guys, so we need some help here, 'cause we're kinda, we got stuck and didn't...
We got too many scenarios.
Took a turn, we, you know, live motion, how do we, Vic, if we wanted to, uh, to spend or...
Yep.
Pull back the live motion so that we could have some time for our village manager to kind of flush some of these things out? Could we do that, how do we do that?
Uh, we can just have either a motion to table the motion, or we can just withdraw the motion and have it come over to the next meeting. I would suggest withdrawing the motion if you're gonna do that.
I withdraw.
Okay, so, Trustee, um, O'Reilly withdrew the motion, do you would...
I'll withdraw.
It was, uh, Trustee Tanucci who, okay.
Yeah, Tanucci, right, so, uh, it's been withdrawn, and I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I said, right now, we're going down a path of all these add-ons, and I don't know what we're getting, so I think...
I, I don't either, so, I, 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 I think another conversation with Greg would be very valuable.
God, all worry, so.
So we can wait.
We can wait, yes. Been waiting this long.
I, I think there's a lot of merit to what's going on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
I feel like we, we should not be making this decision live.
I think we went down a whole rat hole, and I'm not sure we need this extra add-on either, so...
Is, is the question, is, is the question more simple than we think we're making it?
Probably.
In other words, if, if we do the feasibility study, it's thirty-five thousand dollars, and if the answer is ain't feasible, there's no reason to go further. But we, I, I believe what I heard this evening is we, we all think that the feasibility study is a good idea. Period, um, because it could work on that property.
I'm the au- I'm the exception to that statement.
Okay, okay.
It's the exception, I'd rather build a hundred feet of pavement or path north of twenty-two that I know is concrete and solid, these are properties we don't own, we have no control. Don't know if a hundred rooms or eighty rooms is good in that space.
See, that's new information that I, I, I agree with you on.
It's a big hotel, right?
Yeah.
It's a fair field courtyard, spread it out, flatten it out, move it around, make it pretty, whatever, but it's a big hotel, so you got lights, you need security in parking lots.
Right.
I mean, it, it's a big hotel. Sunset Food came to this board and promised that by putting a development in, they would rejuvenate downtown. Certainly, it's a great neighbor, great development, but does the hotel rejuvenate downtown?
Well, and we, we heard for years how we had to have water to make things happen.
Right, and...
We had to sell the water.
Cost-sharing wise, why isn't, uh, the downtown business owners group sharing some of the costs? They're gonna be the benefactors.
Right, and I, 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 I do think it merits a workshop, ult- ult- ultimately.
I don't know water, no, we're not going there. So, can we bring it to a conclusion?
Yeah, so we're done.
We're done, right, so we're gonna, you're gonna go back and you're gonna sort this out and bring back whatever you think's appropriate based on what you're, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ron, I'll reach out for you in the next day or so?
Thanks, really appreciate it, looking forward to it when it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right, take care, everybody, have a good night.
You, too. Okay, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so we are not, we're not gonna put to above the, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just a little, um, disappointed, I guess, because we... I'll speak for myself, I, I, I feel that the feasibility study is a good thing and a, and a smart thing to do. I'm, I'm stuck on add-ons.
Yep.
Okay, and I, I just want, and I, I, I do think that going forward, may, I'll say maybe, in the past, we have considered somewhat conservative, um, not state-of-the-art, if I could better phrase theology, kinds of things, entities. Maybe it's time for us to level up and start thinking a little higher. I, I'm okay with that, I, I don't know, I don't know how, what it feels. Um, may, maybe to, to do things a little, um, bigger than we've done in the past.
Dream bigger, is that kind of?
Kind of, a bigger vision, you know, uh, uh, something more in tune with, um, stepping up, um...
Well, so...
Whatever, but, 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 so, so I'm saying, I guess, is this correct on my part? That we are, for one reason or another, we are not gonna go forward on this at all tonight, we're just gonna discuss it again.
We need, uh, so we want him to refine the proposal, 'cause when it was off the cuff, it'll be eight thousand here, four thousand here. We don't have a proposal, but...
No, I mean, the original proposal. Well, we, we, we were the ones who suggested four thousand dollars, yeah. We suggested that, he didn't. No, we suggested.
He didn't.
No, 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 we did. Though the idea, he set a proxy, he set a permit... No, 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 the concept of adding on the, the, the southern Menards locations, we suggested that.
Right.
So we altered the, thankfully, we altered, altered this.
I, I just think we went down a rat hole, I don't feel really good about, like, getting a live bid. You know what I mean, oh, that's an extra eight thousand, I just, I felt really awful about that, and I'm like going, eh, 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 I don't, just going, I think...
I don't like that the scope is not nailed down, that in terms of the, what I was understanding, the spillover economic information might be.
Yeah, and, and it may be that he just didn't understand what we were saying, so Greg's gonna go back, and we talk to him, we're gonna come back.
I, I trust Greg.
We had, we had heated, we just, we're off.
Yeah, come to Jesus, yeah.
If, if, if I may, I, uh, I, before, the question was, you know, to bring back the motion, I would've... Trustee Barowski had me, I was, yeah, this, we need to take another look at this, and maybe we need to table it for another two weeks. So, I, I will say this, I think, I think for us to look at opportunities like this for a study, um, will have benefit to us, we will get more economic information, and it'll tell us what direction we need to go. Um, these developers keep coming time after time, and the board knows it because I've been sending you information about these developments that will never work on the South fifteen, they just won't. You're not gonna put a hundred and seventy-six pounds on the South fifteen, and, and, but that property is ripe for, for the right development. And I, I can tell you that talking to that property owner, uh, he's in touch with me once a week, once, uh, every two weeks, anxious to, for what does the board want? And, 'cause when he initially was not accepting commercial, uh, because his broker, uh, can, tried to convince him that commercial wouldn't work, he's now accepting of it because he believes that's his best path because the village will work with him on it. Um, I think we've got a cooperative property owner there, however, to echo a couple of the trustees here, I'm not sure about the South fifteen. I mean, those, those outlets have been empty for a while, there hasn't been a lot of activity, there doesn't seem to have been a lot of recruiting for business for somebody who owns the, own that property to get somebody else on there.
The South, the South Gateway.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
South Gateway.
Yeah, I apologize, South Gate.
Yeah.
Um, but I, my personal opinion is, and I'm just bringing it to you as your village managers, I think there's opportunities for us to get a better sense of where, where we can go, and get a better understanding with certain studies, and, and maybe this is the right one, I think, I think there's potential here, maybe it's not. That, that, we'll know more after we have the second discussion, that's for sure.
I just think one of the side benefits of this will be, um, maybe some reality checks for the sellers.
I would agree.
That, that, that four hundred and eight thousand, I'm sorry.
A forty grand reality check, I could, I could do two hundred more square feet on Village Hall for that, or I could build a hundred feet of, it's forty grand risk.
See, that, that's a much bigger, it's a much bigger stumbling block, the, the, and the reason we're getting all the... I, and I already said it, the reason we're getting what we're getting is because it's so freaking expensive. How... This is what I'm saying. Make it work, you know, half a million dollars. That's what I'm saying, though, is that if you've got us saying it, you've got a consultant saying it, that you're not worth what you think you're worth.
Can I?
Not so very well, and they, their biggest moneymaker is land development, not their Menards stores, but it's their incentive to wait until they want exactly...
They're, they're, they're more unique than, 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 than the rest of the world.
So, so can I keep this? So, so can I keep this, can I keep us moving?
Three months on it.
Well, I mean, I think, I think this would lead to a workshop once we have this proposal.
Through the tip.
Right.
We can raise-
Right now, I mean, we were ready, we were ready to do it, and then it kind of went off the rails, and I think we just gotta-
I agree.
Go back and get it sorted, and come back and- That'll lead to a workshop. You're, you're saying you want a different workshop?
I think, I, we've talked about it in the past. I, I think we need to know what we want, and we need to go out and get it. Waiting for people to find us, we've, for how, we've been there, done that.
But another, another workshop again, another workshop, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, we, we need to figure out what we're doing with the feasibility study first, and then, uh, but, but from an economic community development standpoint, to wait for people to bring things to us, you know, it, it's just-
We're gonna die trying to do it.
It's not, we, we need to, we need to get more specific about what we do and don't want, our vision. I agree, we need to have a better vision, and that's a, a good workshop thing. I don't think, I don't think we need to be so narrow that it's like, this is the answer.
Well, you have to have a film report, 'cause we can watch, we can watch the sky to be, uh, based on property, and it ain't gonna happen-
Right.
If the seller doesn't agree.
Thank you. That's my point.
Yeah.
I think Marriott and Hyatt or Fairfield or whatever, they have to have people that are looking at areas and doing these same studies in their best interest to find a good spot. Can we even talk to the property owner about having them reach out to hotels? And, I mean, they have to have a lot of this research.
I, 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 do you really think Marriott had looked at the South Fifteen?
No, but I'm saying-
I, I think they could be looking at the top of fifty-three, but I don't think-
But Jenny's making, she makes a good point.
Yeah.
They do have people who search our properties, just like, just like Shell Oil.
And they wanna have you, they want you to have the statistics about your property.
Well, that too, but, but-
But we have-
Which is what we're, is, which is what we're trying to do.
I feel like a lot of the big companies, they, they knew all of that, those crunch load numbers. So, I don't know.
I also, I mean-
Part of what hurts us is we can't get a, a cut, we can't get a four-way intersection there. No. It's just still, just like-
That conversation's been had, yeah.
Just, no, not there.
But, but I think this study would, that we're gonna be paying for would address that. Is that gonna be a problem or not, right, Greg?
The, the reason these studies are done, and the reason this company and like companies are in business, is because those hotels don't do that. Otherwise, they wouldn't be in business. They, the whole, they're, they're looking, uh, hotels will look for, okay, Arlington Heights, how close can I get to the, oh, reach track to take? Those are opportunities, but to explore options that in a much greater depth, otherwise, these people wouldn't be in business.
That's the kind of thing, isn't that part of the role of us as village leaders too, is to be saying, how do we help add to the knowledge so that we can drive this in with the vision that we want? I mean, Arlington Heights, their current downtown, didn't happen by accident. There, there was some intention there. And so I think this is helping us- Yeah, and this is helping us have more information so that we can either close off a pass, close off a pass or not.
So can, can I stop us here? Getting a night of, so we're, we have a couple of things we wanna do, right? So is that okay, a good stopping point? And Greg's gonna go back, shape it, come back, and it may be somewhat of a proposal. It may not be that different once you get it all done, right? We just, I think-
Would you be sure it's up to Anne before you talk to Anne?
Okay. We get, Anne's like, what are we, what are we talking about?
Seven groups of eight, and why?
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I knew what you meant, private sector versus public sector, and why do you have to go to seven to get to eight?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, um, so we're into the village president and trustee reports. Um, I just got an invite today for the next task force meeting, which-
Finally.
Very short notice on Monday, right?
Finally.
I'll, I'll make it. I'm just shuffling my schedule around, 'cause I'm like, if you did it at twelve, it would work, but you, whatever, so I'll make it.
Because of you.
Yeah, it's because of the elections. So that's all I have on my report. Um, trustee Barowski?
No report.
Okay, um, trustee Kritzmer?
No report.
Trustee Micho?
No report.
Trustee O'Connor?
Same.
I know somebody has a report. That's trustee O'Reilly.
Where, where is now Jeff? Jeff, you missed the best show ever. There was Bill Jacobs and Greg Jackson, and Jim Carmichael, and Scott Wayne, and I. And we are standing ten, maybe twelve feet from the bridge, and we are watching the cars zoom through the bridge. Some not stopping, most do, but some don't. And then this truck carrying a, dragging a, um, some kind of a-
Almost a road trailer.
It was like a horse trailer.
Yeah.
I was useless in that all I kept saying was, "It's not gonna fit." And Bill and Greg ran in front of the truck and stopped this oversized vehicle from going through the bridge. It was beautiful, but it really was oversized. I mean, it would have taken down a good proportion of the front of the bridge, and, and they saved us from that damage. I spoke to the guy, and I said, "What were you thinking?" And he said, "Of going through the bridge." I said, "When were you going to decide whether you would fit?" And he said, "When I got close enough, I would look behind me and see if it would fit." Now, if you can find some logic in that, because I guess I couldn't find it. So they, they, the guys made him back up and, and, and get out of there, but they actually saved the bridge.
Yeah, he's about eighty-five.
Can't legitimately do it.
You can't, you can't. And the sad thing was-
This was yesterday?
Yes.
What is it about Mondays? It would've been the third Monday in a row.
Well, and then there was another truck that was lower that went flying right through the bridge too.
And he, he didn't even hesitate.
Yeah.
And there are five people standing in the road?
Yeah.
It was, it was an interesting experience.
John Kopec, you get it on video?
No, I wish, I, I wish we had, because it was, it was, it was good, but, but the gentleman, say, say. Um, you all should have gotten some mature, are you gonna put those up?
Let me see if I can, uh, let me, let me cheat a little bit here so that you're, um, I will put it up. Let me, um, it's in, it's on the board packet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Let me get to the board packet.
No, I sent them to you separately.
Yeah, no, but, but, oh, it's, um, did you post this one right here? Let me, um-
Yeah, there, there, it's inclusive in there yet.
Okay, it is, okay, yeah.
But here's, here's the purpose of, of what I've done.
But something's going to drag it.
I started from the beginning, and Chuck Nora and I started this in, um, August, two years ago.
Under trustee.
With, um, we were-
The new one, the new one.
With looking at the signage. Um, we made suggestions, some of which were taken, some of which worked, and through, through the course of time, um, signage has been added. Um, and, and so it's really-
This one?
Um, kind of a mess with, with the signage. Um, I wanna thank Aaron Underwood. He gave us a lot of information, and, and if you will recall, he had a committee, I think in-
Twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-one. I don't track time when, when he did it, but it, it's included in the information that you, that I, I sent to you. Um, it, it has a report, suggestions, and the interesting thing of looking at the report in hindsight is that almost all of the suggestions have been considered, um, um, that they made. And so if you go on to the pictures, um, so this is a picture, the, the first picture is the original bridge.
Yeah.
It has sideways. I, I, there was only one other that's sideways, so the rest of them are all-
I'm not gonna mess with trying to flip it right now, 'cause I don't have it probably in a PDF.
Just turn the screen.
But, but it's, it's of course important to remember that, that what's important about the bridge is underneath. Um, it's, it's not the cover. Um, and one of, so, this, this picture is interesting for several reasons. One is that our weight limit is three tons, not five. And, and I, I meant to check, and I haven't, um, that there's a twenty mile an hour limit, and then ten feet later, it's twenty-five.
Um, so Jeff, we changed it to five tons because we took the weight of the cover off the bridge.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just-
That's correct.
I'm just pointing out changes.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we, we, we did anything wrong.
Okay.
I'm just pointing out that, that it's different, and this is the old bridge.
Okay, got it.
Um, without signage, which I found interesting too. So the next one is when it was ten and a half feet, and still at, at three tons. So this is obviously the, um, one of the original, the, the original bridge, and the, the lack of signage, which is interesting too. Um, and then I think the next picture is, um, the other side. Um, so again, at ten and a half, and, and I have never found an explain who I went from ten and a half to eight and a half. Um, where that happened, who, who decided, um, it's behind us, it's, and, and, and the interesting thing about this picture is if you look through to the other side, you'll see where it's got some holes in it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, the, the next picture is what is there today? And, and I, I did that one because of the signage. Um, it, it just, you don't see it. One of the very interesting things that we learned from Jim Carmichael, who has a brother, University of Iowa?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and into eyes and sight and all, and, and he pointed out something we all know, couldn't put words to, people don't look up straight ahead. So ultimately, again, the recommendation that, that we have right now is that each post on each side-
Should have.
Has some kind of a sign saying, um-
Low clearance.
Low clearance with some kind of a flashing something to get your attention. Um, so that, that's today's bridge.
Keep going.
Keep going. But there was, there was an interesting thing that only somebody with that kind of knowledge could pinpoint, that that's an important thing to do, is to keep it eye level. So that, the, the, the next one that, that Bill had there-
Yeah, just messed up here. What did I do? Hold on, I think, keep driving back here.
You also should have received all of the quotes that, um, Scott and I have gotten through the years. Um, we have included the original quote and the new quote. One of the things that it appears to be necessary is that Jeff, um, be able to go through and digest these quotes. They're all in the sixty and up. Um, I, I added one today. It's sixty, but it doesn't include installation. So this sign, I, 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 I wanted because nobody looks at it. They look at the stop signs. They, they, they don't look at it. And, and the trucks must turn. Well, well, then what's a truck doing in the bridge? They're not looking at it. So we, we obviously need to look at what do we legally have to provide in the way of signage, and what peripherals can we change? Um, so that's just pointing that out. So the, the next one is kind on the other side of the street. So when you approach that stop sign, you are seeing seven signs, which, are you reading them? I don't know. And I think that's the last.
Nope, there's more.
Now, this, this is the one that's out in front of the church. Now, this doesn't have too much, much in the way of prevention, um, even the flags that are decorated.
Tattered now, yeah.
Yeah, so, so- Well, this should be their job.
They should, and I used to call them, but they don't.
Um-
They got another one.
Oh, okay, and then, and this, this is the, the, um, village side of the bridge, and again, more, more signage and, and so forth. Um, we have talked about a variety of things. One of the reasons that we asked that Jim Carmichael come is that he's the steel guy, and, um, we were thinking of, 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 of options, and one for is to have some kind of a structure similar to what's in a, a parking garage, so that say, um, ten feet, twelve feet from the bridge, you would have some kind of an arch. Was one suggestion, which I thought was beautiful, was a steel structure in the shape of the bridge that, that you, that would tell you, oops, I can't get through here, and it would be in time that you could then turn into the, the drive into stumble. That's an option. As we talked, the five of us, we came up with a variety of things. Um, should there be something on the bridge that we could create a trigger that would choose colors telling you you're too big? All kinds of objects, options that, that could be possible. What I think it did suggest to us, the five of us, is that we need to think about what we can do um, that's cost-effective and yet, um, can prevent being hit. And, and, and one of the things that I think is important is that we keep in mind that each time it's being hit, it affects our brand, it affects our reputation. But I think we also have to remember that we put in the most protective device possible when we put the steel structure in, that we may be getting these little hits that are doing minimal damage, damage, but not massive damage, because we put in that prevention. So where are we? First of all, I think we all agreed to get the low clearance signs, and, and get them up, even if it's a temporary thing. Um, and then we need to have, have the, the close look at, are, are any of them reasonable? Are any parts of them reasonable, and how can we apply them if they are? And then the other options of using solar to have some kind of a, I don't know, blinking something that would get your attention. One of the things I think we determined, or Scott and I did, uh, a long time ago, is that sound is not, is not the answer. Um, you roll up your windows, turn on the radio, you're never gonna hear, hear something. Um, so that's where we are. Is, is that all inclusive, or is there more to add?
Yep.
No, I think you've covered it, so.
The signage and is there too much signage was also the other question.
Oh, for sure.
Two thoughts. Um, first of all, there are non-English speakers, so we have one sign that has a truck with a cross through it, but I. I would encourage us to do more visual. Um, rather than words, or. Yeah, it's better to visual.
Correct.
Don't they have beater bars that we have up, and we didn't have the cover on? Aren't they laying over on the ground? Isn't this a pretty easy thing for us to put up while we. We have them up for, forever when the bridge didn't have a cover on it, why can't we put them back up?
The headache bars?
Yeah.
The kids would take them and twirl them around the thing, and we'd have to.
I was gonna make a joke, it would look like a McDonald's, but anyways. Put the drive-through right there, go ahead.
People, one, one of the, one of the things that we've always considered is, it can't be ugly.
Yeah.
It, it just can't. Um, we, we've got, you know, a nine hundred thousand dollar asset.
Did you see that, so, we were, it's amazing, we're, there's a family taking pictures of their kids. Now, I don't know if you, you saw that, they were all dressed up, and they were on the bridge, they had a photographer taking pictures. So, there was all this stuff going on.
There was so much going on up there that was.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, they were, um, asshole, doing assholes, burning trees and.
And, and somebody was taking pictures of their kids with a photographer out there, so, I mean, that's, that's the thing, that people are coming down there to do that, it's so neat, that's what Long Grove's all about, right?
Yes.
And you put those bars up there.
Have, have we thought about regoing to the H G L G B A and saying, "Is it critical that vehicle traffic go across that bridge? Or can it stay as an icon?" I, I'm just asking, and I'm not, don't pillory me.
Yeah.
But, but to that point, people are, they want, they, they want the picture, they want the walk across. It's, I, and no way am I saying destroy.
If, if you stand there at nine o'clock in the morning and see the traffic.
I, I'm just, do you know what I mean?
So, I would say, I, I've been told already though, that, that they depend on that traffic coming through there for the businesses, so, they do.
I mean, someone that lives on that road and has to turn left on the fifty-three.
I've done that, that's, that's almost as bad as the Hail Mary at North Kruger in twenty-two.
And you've got a school, and you've got a church there. So, if you don't have the access on the bridge, it's, it's a nightmare.
It's a, it's a very important road.
Yeah.
And, and, um.
And there's no way to, there's no way to go up with it.
At some point, it directs the speed that they fly through town. Um, I know getting in and out of my car, being like, is a death-defying, if I have to do.
I, I'd just like to say, the one thing that will stop all bridge strikes and not be dependent upon anybody reading English or paying attention is the steel bar. I know it's not attractive, but could we get a bar, it might've been, I'm not sure you said it, it might've been.
Don't hit that.
A, a bar that is the shape of the opening of the bridge, the same color of the bridge.
That's what I just said.
Uh, you say, I couldn't remember if you said it, that was you, okay.
She can read the shape of the bridge.
Yeah.
She's coming back to us with some ideas. Um, agenda spooked up. And, and, and that's one of them.
Yeah, the placement on the east side of the bridge, by the stempel is easier because of the fact that you can turn into the stempel lot when you get to that piece. On the other side, it doesn't allow, because you got Schaefer there where the school buses and the trash trucks still have to get to.
So, we put it on one side.
It, it may, it, it may end up to be two different solutions.
Right.
Um, space-wise.
But that is, completely removes the driver from the equation. He doesn't have to read, he doesn't have to pay attention, and he doesn't hit the bridge.
Well, except that you don't want damage, you don't wanna damage someone without warning them.
Well, uh, yeah, clearly, you're gonna warn them and do whatever you need to do, but.
But that's, that's where we are. And, and, um, and, and I, I, I think we'll, we can move forward on, on what can and cannot work, um, on the, on the whole thing. Any questions?
What's the next step?
The next step is, is working with Greg and, and Jim and, and Jeff. Um, to see if these contracts, if these quotes are workable. Um, some of them are ideal, but expensive. And I think when you put, what, we put seventy or eighty into the structure, um, to, we wanna put another seventy or eighty to keep people out of the structure. I, you know, that, that, that's a tough one. But I think that there are incremental things that can be done. And, and one of the things that I suspect is that what works now will work for X amount of time, and then you need to change it. Because people get used to it. And, um, and, and so that might be part of the answer too.
Get a response back from Senator McCaughy, that he was gonna have his staff look at any funding that might be available to us.
Okay.
So, after getting your email on Sunday, I wrote this to Senator, and I got a response back today, so.
Just as a, you gotta take this nicely. Oh, Lord. Thanks, buddy. Well, it, it, and it's kind of on my philosophy sort of thing. Um, how much can we, and, and I'm gonna say this in a nice way, how much can we push to staff? Cause like, what happens when you don't wanna do this anymore? It's more of a, it's more of a board versus staff, not you. Does that make sense?
No, I, I, I enjoy doing this. I've learned so many interesting things, um, in doing it. I enjoyed working with Greg and, and Bill, and so, I, I, I'm not a problem. Oops, don't slow down. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with it now.
I'm just more about like, as a, as a philosophy.
No, the same thing I was concerned about too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, that's why Greg was there yesterday. Is to take some of this, and so, yeah, aware.
I mean, it's pretty easy to put lights up, it's pretty easy to put full electrics in, looking at the height, right? That we don't wanna be crash party, don't wanna be that afraid.
We do that.
But I think you put these big box lighty things on the bridge structure, or in the bridge structure, they're gonna have to light up, beep buzz, or do something, right? Otherwise, you're not gonna catch attention outside of a mechanical stop, right? I mean, you got mechanical, then you got electronics, right? How do you hide the, uh, the signs in the bridge? They only light up when somebody's about to crash into the damn thing, or before they get into that intersection.
You're, you're absolutely right. And, 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 and my most important thing is they can't be unlooked, just can't.
Yeah, so Harley-Davidson's, right?
Holograms.
Harley-David, yeah, right, Harley-Davidson's got really cool saddlebags where they disguise the lights right in the fiberglass. You never see the taillights until somebody presses on the taillight, because the fiberglass thinly covers the taillight. It's the coolest thing. It's custom, but it's really cool. So, we make it to look like the planks of the bridge, but we have this section that's fiberglassed out gray to match it, and behind it are the lights that go as soon as somebody breaks the beam.
There you go.
I'm all over it, right here.
Okay, every time, every time, I can tell you.
Custom made by Broowski and his.
Every time you break a beam, it costs you ten, fifteen thousand dollars. It's just astronomical, what the, what the insulation of that kind of system.
Right, I get it, I'm playing, because you gotta send the beam across.
Um, yeah, cause you have that power and, and force, and, and you can't figure out solar and all of it, and so it's, it's a lot of, um, contemplation, but the saddlebag thing, I don't know.
I'm telling you, Harley, Harley's hidden taillights in the back of saddlebags, it's really phenomenal. And just because you bury them right under the surface of the yellow coat, it's really cool.
End of report?
Sorry. Sorry.
Trustee Canucci?
Well, I had this hour-long report that I was gonna give. I think I'll just save it for another.
You got usurped by the detective and Bobby.
Uh, so then. Executive session tonight, correct?
Oh, no.
Yes?
Nope.
Okay, good, just checking, oh, do you have a Village Manager report?
Uh, the only thing I'll bring up is that the, uh, budget, uh, timeline, it's been drafted, I sent the copy to Kritzmer, um, so, budget process has begun.
Did you get an answer back on the audience?
Uh, no, did you, did I copy you on what?
Yeah, you did, yes.
It mattered.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I'm looking for motion to adjourn.
Someone.
By Trustee, uh, Riley, seconded by Trustee Micho, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Adjourn, goodnight, everyone.
Thank you.
Goodnight.